Board of Education meeting for November 29th. Can we have everyone please stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there is no agenda modifications. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, upcoming events. Okay, on Saturday, December 1st will be Holiday Craft Fair at FDR from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. On Tuesday, December 4th will be the Haviland Middle School's first concert. Wednesday on December 5th at 7:00 p.m. will be Haviland's second concert. Thursday, December 6th will be Family Code Night at Ralph R. Smith at 6:00 p.m. On December 10th at 7:00 p.m., Haviland Middle School's third concert. On December 12th, Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m. will be FDR's holiday concert. And then the next Board of Ed meeting will be on Thursday, December 13th. On December 12th?
11th.
December 11th. It will be the BOSI's vote. Where are the voting locations for that?
Hyde Park Elementary.
At Hyde Park Elementary. Now we're on to Pride. Patrick?
So, at North Park, the Finch is a small robot designed to inspire and delight students learning computer science by providing them a tangible and physical representation of their code. The Finch was developed to catalyze a wide range of computer science learning experiences, from entry into the basics of computational thinking all the way to writing interactive programs. So, Mrs. Williams wanted to give a thank you to the 5th grade students at North Park and Ms. Lang's classroom for setting up and test driving the Finch robots and the Snap software for Mrs. F.'s kindergarten class. And Mrs. F.'s students were so excited to share their programming skills with the 5th grade students who came back to help clean up. And at FDR, Operation Gratitude is collecting a variety of items for troops, first responders, and veterans for the holidays and after. A wish list of items needed can be found at the FDR school website on the homepage. They also have a special need, they also have a special need right now for letters written to first responders, but letters for troops and veterans are always needed and welcomed. The Operation Gratitude box will be placed in the main office of FDR, next to the staff mailboxes, and donations are accepted until December 6th. The school district is once again teaming up with Toys for Tots. There's no toy too big or too small. You can drop them off unwrapped gifts for children at the high school lobby between now and December 7th. And for sports, Amanda Owens, a senior at FDR, she recently signed her national letter of intent to Adelphi University to play softball and study criminal justice. She signed in the FDR library with friends and family there to support. And Sarah Traynor competed in the Nike Regional Championship this past Saturday with the best athletes from New York State. She ran a personal best with a time of 18:15. She finished in 5th, and she earned a spot at the Nike National Championship in Portland, Oregon.
Just a couple of other things, one major one, but the Project FALA, which is where many of our students send cards and letters to our adopted naval ship, the USS Roosevelt, that's an annual event through our art department and through many of our teachers. They send special packages, and from the Hyde Park Historical Society, they gather cookies, homemade cookies that they package up. So, the crew on the USS Roosevelt receive decorations, cards, letters, and cookies. One unique thing that happened at our high school just this week was that one of our life skills classes also determined, part of their unit of study is to bake cookies. And they tried to obtain cookie molds that were nautical, and they couldn't find any. So, they went to one of our science teachers and science classes that has a 3D printer, and they actually physically printed out molds of a ship and an anchor, so that our life skills class will be making cookies in the shape of the ship and the anchor, ship and the anchor to send to the USS Roosevelt. And thanks to Patsy Costello and Ralph Osterhout, who organize this event every year, and we generally receive pictures back of the crew opening all their packages. So, that's always very exciting. So, also tonight, later on in the agenda, a community member that's known to all many, in the first graduating class of the original FD Roosevelt High School, which is now Haviland, one of our, you know, ultimate community members, John Golden, has made a donation to the Hyde Park Central School District to really put in a real sports and athletic training center at our high school. So, later on in the agenda for your approval is a donation from John Golden for $250,000 for our new athletic training facility at FDR High School. We will have a wonderful ceremony, a ribbon cutting, a naming, once the athletic training facility is in place. And from the bottom of our hearts for all of our students for all of the upcoming years, we thank you tremendously. So, thank you, John.
Great, I know what I, what I. It's great, thanks for the hug. Thank you, thank you. I'm aware of the big boost in morale that occurred after you opened a track and new football field, so I hope this is going to be another boost in morale when the conditioning room is rebuilt. And I hope also that all those who go through FDR, this might make them more aware of what good physical conditioning means to all of us. You know, you mentioned back in the original high school, I graduated in 1940, the first class at what was the first FDR High School, and it gets depressing to think about it. Of all the three teams I played on, I'm the only one left alive now, and that, that really gets depressing when I think about it. So, this is going to be a morale booster for Golden, just as much as it is for the for the school district. So, I thank you very much, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any more Pride?
A short, short couple of weeks with Thanksgiving.
Superintendent's report?
Yeah, we collaborated with the community on a CRAZE training. We did this with the Hyde Park Police Department, and I'll turn it over to Aviva because this really came under health and safety, and she spearheads that committee and organized this event.
Thank you. So, Bob Bloom is my co-chair on the District Safe Committee, and he made all the arrangements along with the police department. This was Monday evening at Haviland in the auditorium. It was for staff and community, and CRAZE stands for Civilian Response to Active Shooter Events Training. We had over 50 people attending, it was about half staff, and it was Paul Kachap, Bob Benson, and Marty Monaco. They really did an outstanding job. I learned, you know, it was a wet, dreary evening, and people came out for, you know, really sad and scary, you know, emotional experience, but it was actually hopeful about what you can do to, you know, protect yourself and other people. So, it was very successful.
Thank you, thanks for organizing. Also, under Superintendent's report is something really for us exciting and unique, and we promised Melinda we wouldn't gush about it, but in the learning standards for the Fine and Performing Arts, they've really included a digital component, a digital media component, to really use media as an art form and everything that art encompasses, both, you know, to portray feelings, but also to send, to paint pictures of important messages. And our Director of Fine and Performing Arts, Melinda DiMayo, spearheaded a project to use media to visually depict our budget. And so, going into the budget season, we will be able to see a visual representation of every code in the budget with pictures of our students. Last year, Melinda did a media project, which was really boring because it was a videotape of me, but it was a start, where on all the concert programs, there was a QR code, and anybody who wanted to see what the QR code was about in the budget, I gave a little spiel about the budget. So, not very exciting, but it was, it was definitely a step using media to portray the budget. This year, it's been taken to incredible heights, where students are used, are portrayed as where the money in the budget goes for students. So, in the agenda, there is a QR code, and so you can use your QR reader at any point and click on that, but we are going to show now what you will see when you click on that QR code, right? It's up there, right?
Maybe I'll pull it up.
Can you pull it up?
Yeah. So, can, I'll say one thing.
Sure.
It's not every code.
Wow.
It's, it's some.
Major categories.
If it was every code, it would be a very long video.
Yeah, major categories. Every category, except for maybe retiree benefits.
Great, you're actually giving a tutorial about how to get to it for everybody.
There's a link right above. A link right above it. That you can click, go back.
There we go. Thanks, guys, takes advantage.
Just right-click on it and click on play.
So, a picture is worth a thousand, a picture is definitely worth a thousand words, and that was so much better than having me say, "This year, the budget represents 1.2%," angry. So, thank you, Melinda. I think this helps send the message about where the money goes to, so thank you. And thanks for getting the tech going.
So, next up is 7.2, the Capital Project Update, CSR.
You have CSR, come on up, thank you. While they're arriving at the podium, we've been meeting every other week just to get updates. Thank you, Kim, who has been helping especially with our science labs with her other partner, Mike Ruella. But just as a reminder, this is the HVAC upgrades for North Park, Haviland, and FDR, as well as full science lab replacements at Haviland Middle School and FDR. And I'll turn it over to Dan Woodside.
First, I just want to thank you for not putting us on the agenda right after that amazing gift, because I thought we were going to have a pretty good presentation tonight, but it's going to pale in comparison to that, so that's pretty amazing. But it is about students, it's about space, and we're excited to show you tonight where we are. We're another critical, feels like we were just here talking about schematic design, and now we're back talking about design development, which is what we call the DD phase up here. Going to talk to you, just give you an overview of where we are with that, talk about hazardous materials and how those play into the design process. Revit, which is a tool that we use, instead of drawing ink on Mylar like Tom and I used to years ago, now we use a tool called Autodesk Revit to do all of our drawing, which is pretty, pretty interactive in terms of the modeling of the building, and you'll see a little bit of that as well. We're at a real great juncture in terms of the overall design, science rooms, obviously the core of this project along with mechanical, but we are at a great juncture right now in terms of the science layouts. Stairwells, talk about that as well, we've got some renderings for you on that. Zach will talk on North Park, the mechanical design, and we're going to just go a little bit of a look ahead of what the next phase, CD, meaning construction documents, phase looks like in terms of our overall milestones and where we are with our schedule. So, design development, really the purpose of design development, once we move beyond schematic design, which is really laying out the spaces that we, we all, the group all defined as part of the pre-refereendum process, in schematic design, we're laying those spaces out in terms of size, adjacencies, that, that type of scope. Now, in design development, we want to make sure that all of the scope is very, very well-defined, so that in the estimating and budgeting process, Lou from Palumbo can do his work to be sure that we remain on, on budget. So, we're now starting to look at things in much more detail. You'll see some examples of that tonight in terms of science layouts, casework, cabinets, that, that type of detail that you did not see in the previous phase. So, that's, to get there, we have met with the science staff multiple times, continuing to document existing conditions. Our team has been on-site multiple times to really get into the buildings, to, to move things, to be sure we're, we're making sure we're putting our eyes on everything to avoid situations down the road. Code analysis and life safety plans, the life safety plans are required by the State Education Department. They are driven by our code analysis, meaning the New York State Code, as well as the manual planning standards from the New York State Education Department, making sure we're meeting all the clearances required, making sure we are separating the building appropriately for firewalls, fire separations, and so forth. Zach on the mechanical side?
So, pretty quick, during the DD phase, we wanted to make sure that we really locked down the boiler rooms as the backbone of not only your buildings, but kind of this project, the boiler conversions. We wanted to make sure we got those right, and we were very thorough, so that there's no surprises moving forward into CDs. So, the team spent a lot of time talking to boiler vendors and all different, you know, people to make sure that we understand what's there now and what the plan is moving forward. Aside from the boilers, we did comprehensive load calculations and ventilation requirements based on the code to make sure that we're meeting the code for all of the spaces in all three buildings. That allowed us to get preliminary equipment sizing, ventilation requirements, so that we can begin the process of coordinating with the architectural team and structural teams, and so that, again, we can get the ball rolling on any, anything that would affect the CD phase. And then lastly, there's, we put together for like a typical classroom, we put together one room to make sure that it's going to work, both meet code and, you know, coordination again with, with the trades. So, then during the CD phase, we'll apply those layouts to, to the whole building.
And the only thing I would add to that is that code is really a base, baseline, a benchmark. Our best practices come into play in terms of our experience over the years, and certainly we, we meet code levels, but we're looking to exceed that in, in any area where we can. I want to just touch, touch base for a minute on hazardous materials. It's, it's important because it's, it's a very key part of any project, any school, any education project. The schools that we are involved in, especially renovation projects, you're dealing with buildings of an age that there are hazardous materials in these buildings, and for the most part, what we're talking about here is asbestos. The asbestos that's in these buildings is not in a situation where it's dangerous. These are, these are materials that are tested over a regular period of time. Your, your staff has to, has to know where these, these materials are, but what we do is when we are affecting a particular area through renovations, we bring in a hazardous materials consultant, who is an expert at this, this work. They come in and they sample and they test these different areas for any impacts that, that we may be causing as part of the renovated areas. So, they'll come in, they'll sample, they'll test the areas, which was done during the, during the break over Thanksgiving, while the building was unoccupied. That information then goes back to us. We build that into our scope. They are required to put a set of documents together that identifies clearly where these materials need to be abated, taken out of the buildings during construction. So, that's all part of, regular part of any design project, any construction project, and we just need to make sure that it's built into these, these documents carefully, so it's budgeted properly. During construction, then, the asbestos that comes, any of the hazardous materials that come out of these buildings, if the areas can't be completely cordoned off and are exterior to the, to the work areas, would happen while the building is unoccupied, would not happen while the building is occupied at all. And then, of course, there's an asbestos, what we call an asbestos monitor, a team of people or a person that's on-site while the, the abatement is going on, to be sure that the work areas and the sealed-off areas are intact while this, while this work is going on. So, it's a very careful, very methodical process that, that we have to follow, that the school has to follow, and especially the contractors have to follow, that the State Education Department and code dictates. A little bit about Revit, so this is a little piece of the model we're talking about.
So, the software we use is Autodesk Revit, it's a 3D modeling software. The advantage to using this during DD is on a job like this typically, as you all know, the architectural scope is mostly limited to the pods here. So, the engineers and everybody would have to go back to all the existing drawings and keep tabs on that separately. What we've done as a firm is, as you can see here, we have, our architectural staff has modeled the entire building, whether we're touching it in an architectural fashion or not. What that allows our MEP trades to do is as we put new ductwork in, new mechanical equipment, new piping, we can see the impacts that it has on the rest of the building almost immediately. So, it helps us get through DD, and then the fine tuning and CD will be much smoother, but then the, the big piece that you really see, the advantage to this, is during the construction, when there's a lot less coordination issues than on a typical project. The other, to the last bullet there, it's, it automates the quality control of architectural and engineering calculations. When I do my calculations historically, they'd be in spreadsheets and things like that. Now, we're able to use this tool to automate some of these processes, but also just check the more conventional methods that we had for doing these equations, and make sure that everything's live and up to date, and we're not missing anything, so.
Tom's going to go through some design, where we are with the design now, so we'll just talk about the overall plan, just to give everybody kind of a highlight of that and then get into some details. And we zoomed with this last time, I don't quite remember how. Good luck.
I don't think I remember either. So, I think what you're seeing first is the organizational layout of all the spaces on the first and second floor, and again, we're really focused on the quads, focused on the science room, and this is really a gut renovation, as all of you are aware. The entire configuration of each of the pods will be changed from what is there currently, and this is going to be done for a variety of reasons. One, to facilitate really the science program in a very structured way, but also to provide better wayfinding through the building, so we're going to centralized corridor systems, as you all know. That in one case terminates with an exterior stairwell to the exterior of the building, again, improving the light quality within the building as well. So, starting with the first floor, of course, in, everything in blue here is classrooms, everything in yellow is corridor space, and everything in green is your science rooms. So, you can see that in the, what I call the lower, in this case, the pod at the lower end, the larger of the two pods, that is science on both floors, and on the upper pod, you have the physics rooms, and you have classrooms on the second story. How do I advance this? Okay, okay. Is that the next slide? Okay. So, one of the things you'll... I'm glad you said that. It doesn't look like a school anymore, and that's actually a good comment. So, we're in the DD phase, and so you probably won't recognize a lot of change to the floor plans themselves, but what we're actually focused on is the details within each of the spaces. And we've worked a lot with the science faculty, with Kim, with the administrators, to really talk about not only what the configuration of the classrooms are, and what every piece of casework is, and what its purpose is, but also what does everything look like? What's the feel of the space? And so, what you're seeing here is some glimpses of the, the feel and the character that we're trying to convey within the space, and I'll say it's, it's probably perhaps a little more collegiate than it is a high school science room, and that's, and that's a good thing. We talk a lot about how the spaces interact with one another, we've talked about spaces outside the classroom as potential learning experiences. We actually took a group and... We actually took a group, and Vassar was very gracious to give us a tour of their new science bridge building, to allow people to be able to see science rooms directly, to be able to ask questions, to talk about the different design features, and really see what opportunities we could utilize within the design of the science classrooms at FDR. And so you can see, of course, we want to integrate the FDR green, but we might do it with a little bit of a different flair. So you see combinations of green, and that might be embodied in, let's say, the toilet room tile work. But we're really trying to make a clean and very open and airy look to the spaces. So you're seeing monolithic colors on the floors. We have ceilings at a lot of spaces, but in some of the rooms, you're going to see that we don't have ceilings. So the ceilings are void, and we'll use a plane of the lights or a plane of a service grid that will define the ceiling itself. And that was at request in talking with the teachers about how they wanted to utilize every aspect of the room. So we're trying to capture the feel and character. We're trying to also look at how we're going to integrate signage into the equation, so that people can appropriately find their way through the building. So, so far, so good. So that was good reaction. So, as I said, we went through each of the spaces with the full group. We wanted to make sure that we knew what every object was within the space and how it was being utilized. So it looks very similar to the plans that we showed you at the last meeting, but now you'll see all these little tags on the drawings. So we've gone through, and for every piece of casework, we have understood what that piece of casework function is, what it's for, and how it's placed in the room. So, we know now where every goggle cabinet will be located, obviously UV goggle cabinets where all the cabinets are to house rocks and maps, and all the microscopes, and all the various things that support the science program. So, all of that has been a iterative process with the staff. They've come, we've met with them, we've gone back, we've put it back on paper, we've re-reviewed it with them. They've had additional comments, and we're probably about 99% of the way there. Few minor changes still from some meetings earlier this week, but we really have the essence of all that information conveyed on the documents. This is really going to help Lou, Palumbo, in their efforts in doing the next cost estimate, to make sure that we're on track, and to make sure that everything's accounted for. So, very, very exciting. Here, what you're seeing is the physics rooms, so that's one of the two physics rooms, with the shared prep room in between. I don't know how to increase the size of it. Hopefully, we can all see that. And so you can see, within each of the spaces now, we have elevations, so we can see the casework elevated, or if you're standing against the wall and you're looking at the wall, you can see the line of cabinets, you can see what each of those is utilized for. Here we have the chemistry rooms, and again, a little departure from your existing chemistry rooms, where we're actually going to stations that will serve both for classroom function as well as lab functions with tops that are movable. They raise and lower to service these rooms. Very durable. We went and looked at these, as I mentioned, at Elberis Magnus. And you can see, they lend to the rooms very well. I think the faculty are very excited to actually have these in place. So, something very, very exciting. And then, of course, around the perimeter of the room, you'll also have everything that supports the chemistry rooms, and then the one big master chemistry prep room, which also serves for chemical storage, in a combined fashion. Here we have, I've got to look at these, these are...
Living environment.
Yeah, living environment rooms. So my eyes are deceiving me. So these are the living environment rooms. Again, a pretty standard format, and you'll see this throughout each of the spaces with the perimeter, with the perimeter lab stations, which house the sinks, the lab sinks, the centralized classroom function, and then, of course, up at the front of the room, the demonstration unit. In some cases, the demonstration units are mobile, and in some cases, they're actually built into the space. And that was based on which discipline we were looking at, and again, after real consensus of the faculty as to how they wanted to utilize the room and how flexible they wanted the room to be. So here, we're at Havilin Middle School. Again, typical science layout. Here, you're seeing all of the two-person tables and chairs being pulled to the side. We have perimeter lab stations, but those two-person tables and chairs can also be put into the center of the room, or reconfigured in a number of different ways, as the faculty would see fit. But this just shows a different configuration for that. Again, as I said, we toured Vassar to look at what their science labs, how they were configured, and what they looked like. These are actually the labs at Vassar. I believe these are the labs at Vassar. I'm not sure who took these pictures. But, a couple of things I wanted to point out. One is, this is really the look that we have all agreed that is something we're trying to achieve, so we're going to have the natural wood as far as the casework. Of course, everything's going to be lockable. We're going to have the monolithic chemresin tops with the integral sinks. We're going to, in some cases, have ceilings, and in some cases, as you can see on the slide to the left, we'll have no ceilings in the classroom. It'll be open to the structure with suspended lights and suspended HVAC systems, round duct systems like you see here. Again, very monolithic floor, so very, the feel and the character of these very open spaces. The other thing you'll notice is there's a lovely green wall as an accent, and we are looking to convey that same feel and have an accent color within the room, the green, to highlight the space. Just one wall, perhaps.
We like the lovely green outside as well.
The lovely green outside is very nice as well. And of course, these rooms do have windows, so we'll get natural light in the rooms. They're not as big as those windows, though. We're not replacing the windows in the science labs. The windows are actually in very good condition. So, to be very budget-conscious, those are going to remain, and we're going to continue their use. So we haven't really talked about the stairs to any great detail before, and so what we've done is provided, off of our Revit models, provided a three-dimensional depiction of what the stair, how the stair works inside the building, and then, of course, we've given you a graphic representation or a computer model of what it would look like at the exterior. So this is the stair that's the pin between the two pods, so it's in between the two pods and serves as an exit stair. So we're trying to continue on with the architectural characteristics of the building, but do it in a more modern fashion, to, you know, want to kind of replicate the existing construction. So a lot of glass, a lot of glass. We want to, remember, the objective was to infuse a lot of natural light into the corridor system, so we want to do that. But we also have intermixed that with an insulated panel system, again, for some additional thermal efficiency. And here, you can see the exit doors to the exterior. So from the inside, you can see this stair is actually in the configuration of a U, so it has three flights up to the, three sets of steps up to the, from the first to the second floor. And then those go through a set of doors that access each of the pods independently. Everybody good so far? Looks pretty nice, doesn't it? So now, the lower, or the larger of the two pods has a stair that terminates at the end of the corridor. And again, a lot of natural light into the stairs, but we want to bring that light into the corridor system. It's really going to have a very different feel than what the corridor is currently. But again, in that same kind of vernacular, same type of architecture, again, this is a curtain wall system with insulated panels and glazing. The glazing, of course, would be certainly reducing the thermal transmittance through the, through to the interior for energy efficiency. And again, you can see this is a, although it's not a direct C shape, it's a traditional stair shape turned on its end, there still is three flights of steps to get from the first to the second story. And so, we wanted to show this picture because with the construction of the stairs, these stairs almost float in that space, and so what we are envisioning is utilizing the gold to bring out the color of the steel construction of the stairs and to highlight that and have it act as an architectural feature. We would not have open risers like this. We would actually have closed risers. Open risers aren't allowed in school construction, but this will give you a sense of the character when we're done. We also wouldn't have glass railing systems. I don't want to have anyone take that we'll have glass, or horizontal railing systems like on the right-hand side. Those aren't allowed in schools either. So it'll be, it'll be a different type of rail system, and we'll get to that when we get into the construction documentation. But this is the feel that we're looking for. And now I'll turn it over to Zach.
So I just wanted to quickly touch base on the mechanical approach at North Park. We obviously spent a lot of time during DD to make sure we're getting this one right for obvious reasons. It hasn't changed much, the approach, since the last phase, but we have further developed it, as you can see here. There's the three classroom wings, and basically, the approach is to put fin tube around the outsides of the classrooms, on the exterior walls, with a centralized air handling system for each wing specifically. Exposed ductwork on the corridor side of the classrooms, and the return ducts in the hallway ceilings to those systems. We have tweaked some of the larger spaces, such as the gymnasium and the cafeteria, the approach from SD. And really, what we were trying to do was make sure that no outdoor air enters this building unconditioned. We've successfully, our approach has successfully done that, and we're very confident that this is the right approach. So during the CD phase, we will sit with equipment vendors and scrutinize over, making sure that these units have every bell and whistle that we need to maintain conditioned dry air and maintain indoor air quality.
Okay, just a couple of final thoughts here. We talked about the construction document phase, so that is what we, after tonight, are basically entering from this point forward. What that means is, as Tom's mentioned already, we're, feel like we're about 99% there in terms of the science room layouts and the casework. Few minor tweaks still coming. The interior finishes, we got the nod on the initial layout and the initial color selections, so that's great. Hopefully, you all feel the same way. The staircases as well, so... And then we talked already about the hazmat testing, so we need to react to that and make sure that's part of the construction documents. One of the major things that's going to take place, actually, next week, is we're going to, we showed up here tonight with a set of drawings that was quite large, and that includes all the mechanical, electrical plumbing drawings. We're going to go through an actual page turn with the team next week, your district team, to be sure that everybody is on the same page with exactly what we are specifying and showing in these documents, and everybody has a good understanding of that. We find this to be a very successful approach, and it takes some significant time to do it, but it's certainly worth that time. So that is scheduled, I believe, for next week. And then Zach has already mentioned the equipment selection. So what we're looking at in terms of project milestones, here we are at design development. The design development materials and documents have been turned over to the district. They also are available to Lou Rodriguez, and there also is a meeting coming up with Lou. Again, that's next week, I believe, as well, where our team will be sitting with Lou directly to do our own page turn of the entire set of documents, to be sure that he has a very good understanding of exactly what's being shown. He's been at all the meetings, so there should not be any surprises, but we want to be sure he's got adequate information and we can answer his questions on the scope, so he can do his estimating at this phase. He's doing that estimating now, he's actually already started it, but we expect some numbers back sometime in December, certainly before we go to State Ed. The next line up here, which is January, right now is scheduled for January 10th, which has been all along, so we're still on track to do that. The approach we've talked about before, and we're still taking, is that we're actually going to submit, North Park Elementary School has a separate submission from Havilin and FDR. And the reason we're doing that is so that we can get a possible expedited review on North Park to speed that through the process, the SED review process, to get into construction next summer because of the indoor air quality concerns of that building. So, what our approach is going to be is to call Roseanne at State Education Department, the Director of State Ed Facilities, and have the conversation, which has already started, actually, from your district staff on several occasions, frankly, and Greer spoke about other significant political backing also. So hopefully, the state facilities planning sees it the same way, sees the importance of this, and expedites this review without going through the full, certainly the full review queue, which right now, that line is at about 40 to 42 weeks to get a project through the, at least the engineering review. If she does not, if State Ed doesn't agree to that, the other approach is to go to a third-party review, which we've talked about previously, you do pay for that. In this case, for the size of the project, the district cost to that would be about $7,700. That is, those are costs that can be built into the project, and you would get aid for, but we're hoping it doesn't have to go that way. We're hoping that you're just going to get an expedited review based on the needs of this project. So, fast-forwarding, we look to bid that as soon as possible to start construction in summer of 19. We see both of these options allowing us to get to that point on North Park, and don't see this going beyond summer of 2019 as a starting point. The other piece of this is even the larger part of the scope of the project with FDR and Havilin, we're still on track to submit that at the same time at this point, although we want to make sure that we are putting all of our efforts into making sure that North Park is done by that January 10th date. So, we submit the rest of the project January 10th, and then we look to get that out of State Ed by November, again, through their normal queue, to bid it and award contracts in January of 2020. Construction would be during the years of 2020 and 2021. So, that's where we are.
Yeah, I'll just add, while we're on this slide, if we could go back to that slide, that one of the things, and we can talk about it tonight, and we can talk about it in December, the expedited review at State Ed, while we're going to make every effort to do the expedited review, it's not technically an emergency project, so we may not be successful. Their standard of an emergency project is you cannot open school. So we are looking for a general consensus. It does not require a board vote, but we are looking for a general consensus that if we are not successful in getting the expedited review, you support us going for the third-party vendor for a cost of $7,700.
Is that 77 only for the North Park piece of it? What's the cost if we were to say, let's do a third-party for the entire thing?
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head. There is a fee schedule.
Okay.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can definitely get it for you.
I might have that.
So, let me weigh in on that real quick. I would endorse the third-party review, and look at it simply from this standpoint. If you don't do the third, so first of all, if they don't declare it an emergency to get the expedited review, and if you don't do the third-party review, you are going to lose another construction season.
Right.
So you're going to have an escalation cost that is going to consume all of that $7,700. Everything you save by not doing the review, you're going to spend on the cost of additional labor and material for the project 44 weeks later.
Correct.
I went to a whole session on this when I was at the conference, and they completely sold me on it. I forget what the cost would have been for our project, but it's based on the budgeted amount.
Right.
And the percentage amount, so I don't remember enough to quote it, but that's exactly what they were saying. You know, by not going through the expedited, you're just going to spend it all on construction and bid costs and just everything else, and you're going to... So the money you spend to go for the third-party review, you'll save it, much of it, or most, I mean, in addition to, when you go for the project. it, much of it, or most, I mean, in addition to when you go for the project. I'm convinced we should do a third-party review for the whole project. I think that's something we absolutely should consider.
We can consider it. I would, Lou was supposed to be here tonight, and there's, there are a couple of logistical reasons why we may not want to do it for the rest of the project. One being, we really want to isolate and focus North Park, and the scope of the work at North Park, the expedited review also has a time period, and the scope of the other project would put that timeline out so that we would technically not even get to bid for any construction for the summer of 2019 anyway for the other two projects. So Lou can, and maybe Zach can remember and help me out here. I'm for the expedited review as well, but logistically and from a construction and bidding standpoint, we may not gain that much on the other parts of the project. Go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, so basically, the nature of the work and our new design on North Park lends it to kind of a duplicate system. You know, there's unit ventilators there now with two steam boilers. So our new design is completely different from that. So I think what Lou's thought was that you can install the new system while the old system's still running, so that even if we didn't get in at the beginning of the summer, that even if we could start the work in the summer, we can also work on it through the school year, in tandem with the kids being there and the old system still running. The scope at the other buildings is more of a one-for-one replacement, so there's not a huge advantage to getting in, you know, late August or September where the kids are occupying the building.
No, I understand. I don't want to infringe on any schedule that we might have for North Park for the summer, for this coming summer, which is the summer of 2019, but I would really like, are we on track? It says award contracts in January of 2020. Does that mean we're on track for starting the science labs for the summer of 2020?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but you said 2021. I just wanted to make sure that we were leaning on...
Two years of construction.
The length of construction.
Two years of construction.
That's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that's the path we were on.
My suggestion to you would be that we, if you agree, we move forward with North Park as a third-party review. If they don't go for the expedited review, we continue to monitor what is going on with their full review queue. Go ahead and submit HMS and FDR on the same track that we are. If it looks like they're going to continue to slide their schedule and their normal queue longer, you still have a choice at that point to go to a third-party review, and make sure that we meet that bid period that has been set forth here. If they continue to slide, and we lose our chance of bidding and awarding in January of 2020, then absolutely, I think that that's a conversation about a third-party review at that point.
That's what I meant.
Dan, because the process is, we submit, or we submit to SED, and their first review is for completeness of the package.
Correct.
Only then do we, after they deem it complete, do we then decide whether we're leaving it in a traditional queue or doing the expedited.
That's right.
So there's some time where it's in their hands, and we've got time to think about it, and that's when we really measure and say, okay, what's the typical queue?
Well, and the other piece of this, too, and I alluded to it before, we have to be sure that our entire team is focused on getting North Park done. So it buys us a little time if we decide to go to a third-party review, where if HMS and FDR is a little later than that January 10th date, we can buy some time by doing that as well and still meet your overall schedule. So.
I'm also for endorsing to go HP separately to the expedited route. Does anybody else have anything that may?
You mean NBE?
NBE, North Park Elementary.
Understood.
Anybody have anything?
I agree with that approach.
What's the timeframe that you would need to know by, that, let's say, when will you know you're not going, the expedited won't do it, and you have to go to the third-party?
On the rest of the project besides North Park?
No, just on North Park. I mean, to make sure that North Park gets started and done.
Yeah, we're going to have the conversation next week with State Ed about the expedited review without the third-party piece, and if we get a flat no at that point, then we'll have the answer at that point whether we decide to move forward with a third-party review. So I would say it's going to be within a couple of weeks, we'll know.
Do we have a way of monitoring the projects that are currently in the queue for the expedited? How successful they are in getting through it?
Yeah, we do. We've got Bill Overrocker is the gentleman's name at State Ed who's running that program, so we're on the phone with him quite often. We're actually doing reviews ourselves as well, so we kind of see how long these are taking. We did hear, and it was confirmed by Linda and by Elliot, who were at conferences recently, or at meetings recently, where the third-party reviews are stretching out now, because more and more people are realizing they need to get started in 2019, and they're not getting their schedules met through the normal queue. So now the third-party review queue is starting to grow. So now, what was, I think the last meeting Perry had said, 10 weeks, now is turning into about three or four months of time. So again, that's why the January 10th date is so important on North Park.
People never pass up a good deal.
True.
So the hazardous materials sampling, that was done over Thanksgiving?
That was already completed, yes.
Just one thing that needs worth mentioning. You referenced the monitoring. So there's a monitoring process, and I think this is important for people to understand. During the construction, during the abatement process, the monitoring is done by a third-party group. It's not, it's not the contractor.
Not us.
It's not them. It's actually a third-party that we hire.
Yep.
And report directly to us for that process. So all of the testing, all the air sampling, all of that work is done purely on our behalf. So it's a nice, clean way for us to know that the contractor's doing exactly what we want, and there's some very good monitoring companies out there that, and you know, and you still have the Department of Labor still coming in and doing spot checks as necessary. So, you know, it's one of those things that they've really got down right.
Important clarification. Thank you. That's good.
You looking for more questions?
Nope, anymore?
I've got more.
Oh, you do?
I've got more. Couple things, and this is more of a comment than anything, is we, with the world economy going on right now, now, the good thing is this project is not a new building, so we don't have a huge amount of structural steel, but we do have a lot of sheet metal made from steel. Markets are changing, and I wish Lou was here, because I would poise this question to him, is do we have enough escalation built into the project for all the increases that we're seeing in those world markets? That's one of the concerns we've got to be concerned with. I know of a few projects recently that went out to bid, came back, over, when the bids came in, they were just over budget, and some of it was directly to what's going on with steel prices. So I think that's something we need to be concerned with.
So just, right now, what we would end up doing is identifying bid alternates also.
Exactly.
Because we're not going to be able to increase the escalation at this point. I think there certainly was, at the time that estimating was done, and Tom, I know you were more involved with Lou on this, but there certainly was escalation built in. The market is very volatile, as you say, right now. So the way to counter that now, at this point of the project, is to build in alternates.
Yeah.
It's a pretty, the scope of the project is pretty defined, if you will, meaning there's probably not a lot to kind of shave out as an alternate, so we'll have to carefully craft that.
Yeah, unfortunately, we get to the point of a project like this that is, you know, there's not a lot of options.
There's not a lot of fluff, right.
So, you know, unfortunately, it may come down to the point where some things that you really want might have to be shaved at this time. The other way of looking at it is, can they be added back to the project later somewhere down the road?
Alternates just give you that safety net. It doesn't mean you're going to take anything out of the project. That's not the intent whatsoever, but you need that safety net when you go to bid time to be able to have some of those choices.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom's mentioning value engineering. We've already done a fair amount of value engineering as we've gone through this, to be sure that we are remaining as efficient toward the budget as we possibly can with choices that we're making.
Yep. You mentioned a couple of page-turning events. I'm assuming that there's somewhere along the way, our FNO department is going to have the opportunity for the guys in the field that really know what they're doing, are going to have particularly mechanical equipment. Nothing worse than putting mechanical equipment in place that the guys look at and go, I don't know.
That's the start of that is next week.
Elliot's planning on having the full team in, the boiler guys, the plumbing guys, the electrical guys. So I was very happy when he shared that Jill will also be there from an energy management. So the full slate of people will be there for the page turner next week.
Good.
And we feel that it's important for a multitude of reasons. Once they under, buy-in, a chance to see the thinking behind the thinking before they find out later on what the project is. So time for them to ask questions, so.
The other thing, just to add to that, is that we have added in the incidental costs. We've got room in the budget to add a commissioning agent as well, which is really important on a very heavy mechanical project like this. It's essentially another set of eyes by an independent organization who is working in the best interest of the district, not on the contractor's side, is doing a peer review of our design work, making suggestions during the final phases, and then carrying with you all the way through construction, so that you know that your equipment is operating properly, it's being controlled properly. We have seen this be something that's really important as we've developed projects, as complex as these systems have gotten over the past several years. So it's well worth the money.
Okay. I'm getting close to my end. Mechanical, I'm always concerned about noise. Sounds like we're going, at North Park, we're moving away from univents to a ducted system, which generally would mean a quieter system in the duct, in the classrooms. Sounds good. Pods, we're doing, are they currently univents in the pods?
They're central air.
They're central air, and they will continue to be a central air. Okay, okay. Nothing worse than putting in new equipment that's noisy. And the last question I had was just from a logistics plan. The pods are going to be roughly what, probably an 18-month project, somewhere along there, construction? What are we doing for classroom space?
Yeah, that's come up multiple times.
Well, it's taking one pod down at a time. We've worked out a plan. We continue to work at room utilization. The mantra, we're going to have to work very closely with the staff, and the mantra has to be, you cannot have a long-term solution without some temporary inconvenience. So at least, especially the first year, when we take the larger pod down, there will be a lot of mobility of teachers. You can't shut a school down for a year, so, but there is a plan where we will utilize, we will need to utilize every available space in the building for every available period. We've done a couple of dry runs, and based on the dry runs, we can make it. We are also, we may need to put in some temporary class spaces.
I was wondering if we were...
Inside the building, not outside. You know, making some learnings, utilizing the cafeterias for multiple study halls, looking at having some of the smaller instruction, whether it's AIS, where you have, you know, anywhere from four to 12 kids in a full classroom at the back of the library. So it will be, the first year will be tight. We will really work with the staff to say, okay, so if it's going to be tight and there will need to be mobility, how do we make this livable and doable and manageable? So we're not ready for the phase where we say, how do we make it livable, doable, and manageable? But we actually had to go through the exercise to say, is it doable? Can we actually house this without doing what I experienced of triple sessions? You know, the last resort would be to do something like triple sessions, or hold eighth grade back in Havelin Middle School for ninth grade. If, for whatever reason, there was all of a sudden an influx of a couple of hundred students at the high school, you know, you might need to look at some of that other planning. But according to our dry runs, we can manage one pod down. If you think about it, and went back to the number of students that were housed in the high school prior to the pods being built, it's doable. We have less students now than we had when the pods were built. Again, not ideal. I, you know, not ideal from a, as a high school teacher.
Space utilization is much different now than it was then, too.
Yes, exactly.
Many more specials and whatnot.
Yeah, yes. And, yep, so, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to open public participation?
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, Mr. Spring.
Closed. At this time, if anyone would like to address the board, please go to the microphone and state your name. Seeing no one going to address the board, public participation is now closed. Now we're on to 9.1, Board Subcommittee Reports. Any committee reports?
The Policy Committee met twice, both lengthy meetings. We reviewed 33 policies, and 16 are recommended for approval for first consideration on this agenda. We're making great progress, by the way, from what I've heard from Jay compared to other districts, and what she hears, we're way ahead of the curve. So I think it's a really important thing to do, and I'm glad that we're keeping up with it.
Any other subcommittee reports?
Was the DLT, did we report on that?
Yeah, I didn't report on it yet.
Oh, okay.
The DLT met. We're working on several, not sure we have where we've gone with it, but we had a great time of talking and planning and talking about our five-year plan and going forward and the movement. So I actually feel more encouraged with our five-year plan afterwards.
It was a good meeting.
So we're looking forward to seeing how this is affecting our district. Nobody else? Okay. 9.2, the Dutchess County BOCES Capital Project. Perry, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, and I've had the pleasure of serving on the committee that's been working on the capital project for the Dutchess BOCES Capital Project. And I asked, first of all, as a group, I understand we cannot so much as endorse it or tell people how to vote on it, as we can't tell people how to vote on our own budgets. As individuals, we can do that. We can express our opinions, personal opinions individually. I think what's important for our, the residents of Hyde Park, and actually the residents of all of Dutchess County, to know what this project is. I suspect that everyone has received something that looks like this in their mail. This was put out as information to tell where the voting is going to happen on December 11th, 2018, from 12 to 8:00 p.m. That's a Tuesday. Every school district, each one of the 13 school districts and the BOCES Center, are going to have locations where you can vote. You do not have to vote specifically in the town that you are a resident. If you work in Wappingers but live in Hyde Park, you can go and vote at the Wappingers location. It's not necessary that you come back to Hyde Park to vote. It's that kind of flexibility, because in fact, it's one voting district. It just happens to be that there's multiple voting places. So I think that's, it's valuable for you to know that. I think the other thing that's very important for you to know is that we're not talking... about something that is not, doesn't affect our students. Hyde Park has always been very involved in BOSI's. Aviva, I know that she's got some current statistics.
So these are our students currently attending programs of BOSI's. So at the Career Technical Institute, we currently have 139 students enrolled from FDR. At Salt Point, we have 12 students, and that's their K-8 center. At the Beta Site, at the Adolescent Day Treatment Program, we have 13 students, and we have six students at the Alternative High School. In addition, there are six of our students who are at component districts, so there are other school districts that have BOSI's programs.
So I.
And those are current Hyde Park students.
You know, there's 150, 200 students from Hyde Park that are benefiting from BOSI's programs. And this project is going to touch many of those people. Originally, when this project was conceived of, it was a new high school, so maybe there would be a much smaller number of the BOSI students affected by it. Through a redesign and a rethinking of what the project is going to be, it's going to be a contiguous addition to the existing building. I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's something that we should all be thinking about in the way that they're going to be building spaces that are going to be commonly used, whether you're, you know, if you're in a welding class and you need a separate space for a classroom or for research or, you know, non-shop type of use, that space is going to be there and it's going to be available to you. And that's in great need right now at the BOSI Center. So by building it as an addition and not a separate building, they're really picking up a lot of advantages for a lot of students. You know, and with any capital project, there's always the ability to step back and say, well, what if we do nothing? I will tell you that I had been through the space, it's the, the Alternative High School is located currently now at what, I'm not sure what they call it. Yeah, it's the old De La, Alpha LaValle, De LaValle Plant, yes. I will tell you that I'm sure that if parents, if that was what, if that was the condition of our schools, our parents would be outraged. I had the opportunity to walk through the building recently. A couple of things, you know, not, a couple of things, a lot of things that I saw. We're talking about a building that's a factory, heavy industrial factory, that's now been turned into classrooms. Now, these might have been offices originally, but the point is, things like half, about half of the classrooms that are in the space or that are being used don't have windows to the outside. I mean, these are, these are just rooms that the kids are sitting in all day long without natural light. The classrooms that do have natural light, the windows don't open, so there's no natural ventilation. The ventilation system, BOSI's had to put in the system that they put in, and they've been there over 20 years. Many of the systems they've got are just tired. They're just worn. They don't meet the ventilation requirements of a current space. Ventilation, taking another step further, on the other side of the wall of where we have students sitting, they have a spice, there's a company that packages and processes spices. The smell of the spices was so strong in a couple of the classrooms, I couldn't stand to be in there. The thought that we have, that we have students that are in those spaces, it's just ridiculous. The general space, BOSI's tries hard. I know, I know the facilities guys over at BOSI's, they try hard to take care of this. The building is just, it's, it's worn out. The floor tile, again, this is a manufacturing space. I don't know what was on that floor, but all of the vinyl floor tile are coming loose. They're curling. They're not totally loose, but to the point where they're just not adhering to the floor anymore. Try to think about trying to mop a floor or sweep a floor with the floor tiles that are curled the way they are. I'm just trying to pick through some of the things. But, you know, outdoor space, I mean, we enjoy, you know, we expect our students to be able to go outside and have a good, you know, physical fitness environment on the outside. Their outside is a parking lot. The benefit they have is a, there's a wooden fence that separates them from the rest. And the rest is the traffic of, they have a building supply. There's a siding and roofing company in the space. There's a welding supply company in the space. There's, there's a, like a flea market. You know, every weekend, they come in Monday morning and they have to clean stuff out of the parking lot that was left behind the flea market. My point is, they, these are our students. These are students of Hyde Park. These are students of Dutchess County. They deserve better. We have to do better. I recognize, look, we're all spending more on taxes. We have, you know, this is something that we really need to take a good, hard look at. Think about it, you know, think about the children in your neighborhood. I can't tell you that I personally know any child going to that school, but I know that I do not want the children of Dutchess County going to that building any longer. I want, I want them to have a new facility. I think we should all want them to have a new facility. And I encourage everybody to go out and vote, exercise your opportunity to vote. And I personally, it's clear where I, I will vote. I will get off my soapbox.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we're on to 9.3, a memorandum of support request. If you look in your, there's a letter of, a sample letter to send to Governor Cuomo. This is a letter on the property tax cap where the capital project for BOSI's, that is not included, excluded from property tax cap, and we're looking to see if that would be excluded. Otherwise, this property, what we pay to BOSI's for this proper capital project will be held against us on our tax cap.
And I think here, I think I'm correct on this. This bill has passed both the, both houses, state houses, and it's gone to the governor one, at least once before. Has it been twice?
The only one?
Oh, I don't know. I knew once.
I knew it was at least once, and it was not signed. So the point is, all of our, you know, everybody else in government recognizes that this is what needs to be done, except for, except for one. So, you know, I.
So in general, do we support sending Governor Cuomo this memo?
Yes.
Yes.
With enthusiasm.
Okay. So we're on to Section 10, Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think it just, the donation.
It's unbelievable.
I mean, that's just unbelievable. I mean, I mean, talk about a citizen who rises to the, to the occasion and supports the, the school district. And granted, he's doing it because he has the means to do it, but he doesn't have to. And I'm sure there's certain others who haven't taken the opportunity that he has. And I would just personally say thank you very much. I think it's very much appreciated. It's going to have a huge impact on students in the near and long future.
It's not just he has the ability, he has the pride in the district to do it.
Absolutely, yep.
And I'd like to make a comment on that. He emphasized the fact, and we've talked about the fact, aiding the sports programs and stuff like that. But I believe the intention also is to provide a fitness center for other students to expand their capabilities and improve their health. So it's not isolated to athletics alone. But there will be opportunities for students to use it as a fitness center, which is important. More kids and more people we can get involved in physical fitness, the healthier the environment, the healthier the group is going to become.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1, Special Education placements?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I've reviewed the pack and recommended its adoption as presented to us.
Any further? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, the first reading of policies?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good work by the, the group that did this. It's a lot of work.
How many are there total, just out of curiosity?
How many policies are there?
Total number? How many?
305, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, Attorney 214, Hearing Officer Alternate Plotzky?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this similar to what we've done in the past? Is there any?
Yes, we have Steve Chaken, and we also had Bob Mounts. And Bob Mounts has finally retired, retired, really retired. And so we had one remaining. And he travels quite a bit. Aviva is also a backup, but now that we were down to one, we wanted to make sure we had a second one in the wings.
And from an economics, they can all file, they in similar lines?
Not really, no. He's just a backup because he is, he's actually an attorney.
Yep.
And he charges for travel.
Yeah, I see port to port.
Yeah, so it would only be used when necessary.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, Instructional Services Agreement with Berkshire Union Free School District?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5, Vendor Agreement, Abilities First, the UPK program for, see the year 1819?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just, so this is.
Why now?
Why now?
I can't answer that.
Okay. And this is all-inclusive now, right?
Yeah. What do you mean by you all-inclusive?
So.
We still pay transportation.
We still pay transportation, but we're only doing abilities, UPK now with, was there a time?
One set of buses. For both programs.
For both programs, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6, the License Agreement with the CIA for pool use for the swim team?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does it come with free cookies or anything like that?
I thought we had a pool somewhere.
It's under the, it's under the gym floor, right?
We're going to find it. It's under the pods. We're going to find it when we do the pods.
It's got the right surface area. You've got two inches of depth.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to re-enter public participation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. There's your last chance, if you'd like to talk to the board. Seeing. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Do not believe we have any other matters deemed necessary before the board. Can I have a motion to, and we have no need for a ZEC session, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor? Motion carries. We are, we are now adjourned.